Good morning, everyone. It's good to see you. Thank you for coming out. This was a great, great day in Christian church. We are moving forward. And it's so, it's really great to share all this with you. I'm gonna sound like a politician for a minute and say, "I'm here this morning to share, fulfill the campaign promise that we made during All-In to keep you updated." And that's what this is all about. So, the agenda for this morning, just quickly, our design engineering project manager, Equip Studios, Alicia Coleman is gonna start it out by just talking about where we've been in the project and the design, where we're headed towards construction. And then our finance partners, Christian Financial Resources, David Powers and Jesse Kim will take it over from there and start talking about the financial piece of it. And that'll leave us about fifteen or twenty minutes for question and answer at the end. So, with that, I'll pass it over to Alicia.
Good morning. Like Ray said, my name is Alicia Coleman. And I have been with Equip Studio for almost three years, but I've been in architecture for now eleven years, which is kinda crazy. But we do a ton of what we're doing today. We do a ton of church work all across the country. And we're really excited to be kind of here in our backyard doing a project for you guys. And it's been a process we have enjoyed. And we are excited that we are now really close to seeing it take shape and see the physical manifestation of all the work that has gone on in the background. I, like I said, have been an architect for about ten years. I have a husband and two kids. We live outside of Columbia, so just a little hop down the road. But got a huge team behind me in Greenville that back everything up and have really spearheaded the design efforts thus far. So, just a snapshot of where we are and where we've been. So, we kinda start out on the gold bubble at initiation, just really trying to work with the team that your church has put together and distill down to what your goals are and how a building can best serve your purposes and ultimately the Lord's purposes. Then we jump into concept and kinda produce these renderings and plans that you guys have had in front of you for a while now. And at the end of that, so where you see the first bridge at the top, is where we brought on several contractors to meet with and interview. And we met with Ray and the rest of the team trying to help guide that decision. And that's when we brought on Clayton Construction. And then from there, Equip and Clayton has worked together to develop the design a little bit further through schematic design, which is what the SD stands for. So, during that process, it was really kind of a cycle back and forth between us and Clayton and the church team, drilling down to what the ultimate goal of this project was. And also, what that would cost. Because that's always the important question, is what's this gonna cost? So, we spent a lot of time in SD and then in the first align between schematic design and design development to make sure we, as Equip, that's one thing that's really important to us, is to make sure that we are keeping that budget in check all along, so that we don't get down here to the second bridge and realize, "Oh, no, we're double what the church wants to spend." So, we try to keep that in check all along. So, that's what we spent the summer doing, is massaging the design, going through VE that you'll probably hear me say a lot, which is value engineering. Where can we cut without cutting the bones of the project? And what's the most important for the church? And so now, if you wanna go to the next slide, we're probably about three-fourths of the way through this DD phase, which is design development. So, this is when we really try to iron out the bulk of the design. We try to make all the final design decisions during this phase. Because once you move into the next phase, which is construction documents, that's when we're preparing what the county and all the municipalities want to see to be able to start construction. So, we really wanna make all the design decisions that we can during this phase and finalize all of that. So, that's kind of where we are now. So, talking about the VE strategies and scenarios that we've gone through, we always like to say that it's kind of a three-legged stool. With any project, you have a budget. And inevitably, I've never worked on a project that didn't have a budget anyway. And then you have the size or the scope. And then you also have the level of design. With a lot of churches, you're delivering a nice design, but there's never a ton, or not typically a ton of fluff in the project. So, when we got the original numbers and they came in, not really surprising with today's construction climate, they came in a little higher than what we would've liked to see. You know, there wasn't a whole lot of design fluff that we could cut. You know, it was pretty, there just wasn't a lot. And so, then we came down to, you know, can we increase the budget? Or do we decrease the size of the project? And then working again with Ray and his team, you know, we could cut the project and get it in budget, but it wasn't really meeting the goal of the church when we started out this project. So, that is kind of where we are budget-wise. Again, this is still a budget. We're still relatively early. So, when Clayton did their pricing, we were at the end of schematics. There's still a lot of things that weren't completely hammered out that we are now working on. So, what we'll do is at the end of DD, and we'll go into the schedule on the next slide, we will share our drawings where they are. We now have more in-depth engineering completed. So, yeah, you can see here. So, we'll turn over some design development documents to both the church team and to the contractor. And they'll be able to, again, go through this process of kind of checking us to make sure there's nothing we've added that's kind of superfluous, that's adding, and just kinda making sure we're still on target with that number that is our target. But it won't be until, let's see, early March if everything goes according to plan. And again, even this schedule is, you know, an estimate of kind of, if everything goes smoothly, this is what we would hope to meet. But there are always factors outside of our control that, you know, some of these could slip. So, this is, again, just kind of a broad brush of best-case scenario at this point. Though something we feel like is achievable as far as the factors that we can control. But it'll be early March, just mid. Clayton will be able to finalize the GMP. And so, that will be what your building costs, outside of any changes that the church decides to make during the construction process. So, that's kind of how that works. But as we look at this schedule, again, like I said, we're wrapping up DDs here in the next couple of weeks. For the architecture engineer, that's what ANE stands for. So, that's me and then all of the engineers that are working under me. And then civil is a separate contract with the church. So, their schedule kinda moves at a little different pace. We like to be able to, if possible, release civil early. And then architecture drawings can kind of follow in behind that. But the way this area and the permitting works, civil permitting takes a lot longer than hopefully the building permitting will. So, as the stars align, or God's divinity, everything looks like it's gonna kind of come in. If permitting doesn't take too long, or longer than we anticipate, everything should be ready to kind of get rolling sometime mid-April, is what we're anticipating. Again, you know, we have, as the architects and engineers, we have control up until that mid-January when civil submits their permit drawings and mid-February when the architectural and engineering drawings will be permitted. And then after that, we're kind of at the mercy of the county as to when the next steps take place. In talking with the project manager for Clayton Construction, they are anticipating about a seven-and-a-half-month construction time. Again, we are starting site work in the rainy season. So, knowing, again, that's estimate, best-case scenario, that seven-and-a-half months is what they're thinking. But again, only the Lord knows what the weather will hold and what we'll find when they start actually breaking ground and getting the ball rolling. But that's what we're looking at. And then I know you guys are super familiar with the next few slides, so I'm just gonna blow through these fairly quickly. But I did wanna say that the site plan that's back here on the wall, really the biggest change that came out of the value engineering was with the site work. And even those are not super significant. This is actually just a direct copy of that with the back drive taken out. But we also know that the parking will be, I think this shows a little bit of an extended parking, but it will be the same size of the parking lot that you have now, but it will be re-topped and resurfaced to kind of maximize what will fit in that lot. And then we will be keeping the front entrance, because we felt like this is something, reaching out to the community, that this is something that really gives you guys more of a presence on the main road. So, we will be keeping that, adding enough spaces to meet the current code requirements for that, and then restriping and resurfacing the rest of the parking lot. So, but really, out of all the VE exercises or value engineering exercises, that's what, that was really the significant cut. And going back to talk about the money coming in, just a little, or the budget coming in a little bit high, what we found was the biggest things that were driving that were mechanical, electrical, and then fire protection. Because we have to add, to add anything to the building, we have to add a sprinkler system. And those aren't necessarily things that you're gonna see as the end-users of the building, but if they weren't there, you would definitely feel the effects of that. And it's things that really can't be cut. So, I missed that on that slide. But, so that's kind of where we felt like the big drivers were, that it wasn't necessarily the square footage of the building, but it was the infrastructure that we needed. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, this is what we're really looking at, is talking to these guys before. It really is kind of three chunks of the project. So, we've got the common lobby on the right side, and then the commons lobby and classroom space on the left side, and then renovation of the education building. And just really carving out places for everybody, for adults, for children, and then a place to congregate and meet before and after services. And just have more of a presence and a front door to the community. And then you can kinda flip through these fairly quickly, because I know you guys have seen all of these. But again, just adding those wings and then your new lobby space. I will take this time to say, we haven't picked finishes yet, so the end product may not look exactly like this as far as finishes and colors and that kind of thing. That will be part of wrapping up DDs and starting CDs, is making those final selections. And then in that bottom slot, of course, you do see the later phase, you know, what could potentially be a later phase. But kind of where your logo is, that would be kind of the end of the new, or this current phase, as you look at it from the main road. But again, just having a space to come in and congregate. And really, these open spaces could be used for so many things throughout the week and even on a Sunday morning. So, with that, I will turn it back over to Ray.
Jesse, David?
Good morning. My name's David Powers. This is Jesse Cam. I serve with CFR in a capacity of regional vice president. I have been with CFR since April of this year. But I've worked in local churches around Atlanta for the last 25 years, the last 14 years as an executive pastor. And so, I've sat on the other side of the desk from the guys at CFR for the last decade, the churches that I've been with as a partner of theirs. As CFR, we are a ministry partner. We are a lender. We've been around for nearly 40 years. April will be 40 years that we celebrate ministry. And we serve Christian churches across the US. We have over 270 loans right now. We actually have over 40 active construction projects that are happening across the US as well. We are a fund that just surpassed $500 million in assets under management this year and continued to grow. So, we're excited about that and how we get to partner with the local churches. And in that, being more than just a lender, we really try to walk alongside churches on the front end of construction projects and renovations and things like that. Through that, to that end, we have two guys on our staff now that are full-time that do construction management. And so, in that process, not that we're just lending the money, but that we're there to walk alongside and try to help in that process as you navigate, in partnership with other groups that are working along as well. So, I'm gonna hand it over to Jesse. You can talk through that.
So, as David said, my name is Dr. Jesse David Cam. I am a senior vice president of construction management at CFR. I've been with CFR, I started as a consultant around the year 2000 when CFR was just about a $10 million fund. And since then, we've grown through all 50 states, we're 49 states right now. And coast-to-coast, we have 45, 46 projects in varying sizes from a few hundred thousand dollars just capital improvements, things like finishes and upgrading old HVAC units to $24, $25 million projects that are fairly large. So, this is not a fairly large project to me. This is a normal project. I would put a project of the size that they're talking about to the low-to-midsized, normal church project type range. But before we get into the specifics of this project, I wanna really focus some time on what healthy church financing looks like. So, there are six people on our finance committee that looks at all the loans. David is your rep. So, David serves four states, three states? Three or four states in the South? And we've got a number of fellows like him from coast-to-coast do the same thing. And they bring the whole picture to the team, and the six of us vote on it. And so, when we vote on them, we're looking at a couple of key targets. And as you get away from these targets, the loans get more risky. So, we want to keep it all balanced. And I'm gonna talk a lot about risk and levers that the elders and the leadership of this church has to pull during this process. It's a dynamic process. When you go through a construction of a project, things change often. So, even those renderings that she showed you will probably not be identical to what the end result is, but it'll get you towards that path. And so, we wanna think in terms of a target. So, one of the key figures that we looked at on this church in particular is the debt ratio. So, how much income is spent on debt service? And we wanna target about 20%. This church has historically had no debt, so we wanna really have a hard focus on that. And David and the elders have done a good job in trying to prepare this year the budget for future years. And the way these construction loans work is you don't pay the principal balance until the end of the project. And so, what we'll probably do is we'll probably offer something like a three-year interest-only period, where they can always pay down debt as they want, but it's not required. And the whole goal of that, number one, is to get through the construction project. And then number two, to have some time after that project so that you can sort of grow into the building and grow into some new growth of the church and hopefully get the ratio down a little bit. And that's why it's always, usually, I would say 90% of the time, it's coupled with a capital campaign. And I know you guys have gone through that, the All-In campaign that you guys have worked through. That's a key component of this. So, three other key things that we look at. We'd like every church to have 13 weeks of cash on hand. And that should be a key number that the elders are talking about at all times. When that number starts to drop, you start to see, "Oh, so now we only have 10 weeks of cash on hand." We can start talking as a church, what levers do we have to pull to control that? We also like to see the LTV, the loan balance to the value of the property. This is no worry here, to be around 60%. And then we'd like to see every church having some savings. Just like your personal life, we want you putting some money aside for the times that get tough, you know, hurricanes for the northern projects, snow. If you have a couple of weeks where attendance doesn't happen or you can't have church, we want you guys to be able to ride through those times really easily. All right. So, every project has sources and uses of funds, right? So, the cash on hand, David has been tucking away, and the elders have been tucking away all of the money from the capital campaign and from savings right now. Has been saving as we've been advising you. So, I'll back up. So, part of my role in this project, I don't actually manage the construction. What I help is to try and guide the church leadership through all these waters. So, I have a background in church construction. I also have a doctorate. So, I kinda come from the academic side. I've got all kinds of modeling tools to kind of go through different scenarios that could pop up. And I, during the early part of a job, will help the church kind of navigate those waters. And then once the project starts, I'll do inspections and I'll do things to protect the investors. So, we have 4,000-plus investors who have money savings or certificate accounts with us. And so, I take that very seriously. So, we'll do some checkups with the pay applications and all of that. So, there's a whole lot of decisions that still have to be made throughout the life of this project, including how much money comes in from the capital campaign from here throughout the rest of the life of the campaign? What is it, about a year left or so on that? Oh, so you got a lot of time left. So, the cash flow is a key figure to any of these projects. How much money comes in from the capital campaign will equal or subtract from how much you pull from the loan. So, the way these construction loans work is you only draw money as you need it. So, as the architects are billing and the engineers are billing, you can pull money from the loan if you don't have it on cash. And the same thing with the contractors' pay applications once you start into construction. So, those three things will equal the total funding. And I'll give you a scenario on the next slide. This is a pretty likely scenario from all of the things that she just told us about that budget. Roughly, we're shooting for a target budget of about a $2 million project. And the scenario that we're looking at looks something like this. So, it'll be probably about $150,000 or so of cash on hand that the leadership has to date. And then I'm expecting and I'm hoping that the congregation steps up in a big way between now and the end of the project for about $350,000. And then our loan will be somewhere between 1.2 and 1.5 million dollars, is what I'm thinking, to get you around the $2 million mark. And then if we see different indicators of those three things changing, we can always pull different triggers on the project to cut pieces off, to trim pieces back. Scope cuts is a direct cut that you'll see in your field. Then there's other things like dying engineering that she mentioned, where it's looking at similar products that might have different functionality and different costs that go with those functionalities. So, did I miss anything, David or Ray?
Okay, at this point, I think we'll take some question and answers on anything that you've heard. One thing that we didn't talk about that I think is important, so my project management team that I introduced you guys to back during the campaign, Richard Winslow, Mike Funk, Marty Watson, Brian Ware. The, so we sat in this summer with Equip Studios to go through a, what was a full day pretty much, of contractor interviews. So, we brought in four different contractors and heard from them on everything that they have to offer. And we unanimously picked Clayton Construction. And you can go online, Google them. They are a very high-end construction company out of Greenville. And then they have offices in Columbia and Charleston now. And they are tailored towards doing things for churches. Most of their projects revolve around churches, and they do a lot of input with the churches during construction. So, it was great for us to all arrive at the same contractor. That's always a scary thing if you have half the people wanting to go one way and half go the other. But, you know, we all came in at the same person and same contractor. We're glad to be working with them. So, with that, I'll open it up for questions.
If you have a question, raise your hand. I'm gonna come to you, because we're recording this, video and audio, so that we can post this online for anybody who couldn't be here this morning, so they can be that information as well. So, we wanna get your question recorded as well. So, if you'll raise your hand, I'll come to you with the microphone, so.
Morning, Ray. What's the difference between a civil permit and a building permit?
The civil is primarily the site work, site drainage, getting all your utilities to the building. And then the building permitting is the architectural, the actual building itself, and the mechanical, electrical plumbing parts of that building as well. So, it's kind of two separate entities that look at those. You've got one that deals only with site and one that deals only with buildings. And unfortunately, in this area, the civil permitting is, it takes a good bit of time from what we're hearing.
Yeah, the one thing I'll add to that too, Butch, is the, Berkeley County is one of eight coastal zone counties. So, we're required for even more stringent permitting due to wetlands and other issues that take place in the Low Country. So, that in itself always pushes out our permitting process.
Yeah, will Clayton Construction, will they be using local subcontractors for mechanical, electrical, et cetera?
They will be using, pulling mostly from local. But one of the things that the team really liked about Clayton is because things are so busy construction-wise in the Low Country, that they do have the opportunity to pull from the Columbia area or even the Greenville area should they, and those subs end up more cost-effective than local ones, just due to the amount of work that's going on in the Low Country right now. So, yes, but then they also have other avenues that if it benefits the church, that they can pull from.
Is there any kind of a bond or anything on the project, y'all and the contractor?
So, there's two kinds of bonds that I would primarily look at. It's either a performance bond or a payment bond. They usually go together, P&amp;P bond is how it's commonly referred to. I usually try to waive those, and I'll tell you why. Because the contractors who can get them don't need them, and the contractors who need them can't get them. And they'll cost you about 3% of the cost of the construction to begin with. So, what I try to do is I try to qualify these contractors upfront. So, there's an AIA, which is an acronym for the American Institute of Architects, has a Contractor 305 qualification form. I'll require that from Clayton, and I'll get their financial statement. That's a part of that. And we'll go through an underwriting process on them too. So, if I can waive that process, we'll do that. And for a while, any project over $1 million prior to about 2008, especially with the government was looking for a bond. But I find with churches, it's usually not a value spend. And so, if I can qualify the contractor, I can qualify Clayton, then we won't have that issue. Occasionally, on my larger projects, when it's a $20 million project or something like that, I will require it on those or on specific subs that I have problems with when they are above like a $300,000 contract for one particular sub that could control a lot of that project. I don't imagine any sub on this project to have a very large contract at all. So, in terms of construction dollars, a $10,000 or $12,000 contract's not that large. So, I expect a lot of them will be in a $10,000 to maybe $100,000 range.
You guys were exceptionally thorough, I guess. While you're formulating more questions, I'll just jump in. This is the first time I've ever been through anything like this on a personal level, certainly on a professional level, leading a church. So, this has been a learning experience for me, and there's been a huge learning curve for me. And one of the things that was a little disappointing initially when we kinda had the project and then that project was modified, was understanding how when you, you know, adding on to a church is a little different than any other construction project. This building as it exists has kind of existed like this for the last 30 years. And so, anything we do to add on to it's gonna require a lot of updating. And so, the fire systems that Alicia talked about and the renovation costs to our educational wing, that's where we're eating, we're seeing a lot of those costs be higher than what we originally estimated. And of course, just some of the site work. And they've already talked about where we live and some of the impacts of those costs. So, so there's definitely, we're just pointing that the initial project that we had quite in mind is not quite exactly what we're looking at now. But what I do feel good about is that so much of what we're going to be able to accomplish still meets the goals that we set out and we agreed upon as a church. You know, one of the things that came out through this discovery process that Equip let us through is one of the things that is valued about our church is that it feels like family. And that's something that people say within the church, people who've only even visited here at our church have made that comment. And that's the impact we want everybody to feel when they come, whether they come and stay, or whether they come and leave and go elsewhere, or they move away or whatever else. And so, having those spaces where connections can happen, we know is a vital, vital need for us. We've also, as a church, said that we need to be reaching people on the other side of that dot. Do you remember that conversation about reaching those people, those younger families that are moving into our community by the droves? And so, having a part of our facility that is geared and targeting those young families, where when the parents bring their children and they feel safe and they know, you know, they're gonna be taken into this room and it looks neat and clean and like, "My children are gonna be loved on and accepted here," that was a vital need as well. And we're still a church of a size that we like to get together and spend time with each other as a large group. We may grow to the point where that might not be always as easy to do, but several times throughout the year, we like to have large gatherings, and we can't fit in our current fellowship hall. And so, this plan still allows us to do, to be able to fit more people into that space and to do more of those kinds of events as well. So, through all of the back and forth and the mis- So through all of the back and forth and the massaging of everything we had to do, I still feel really good about the fact that a lot of those things we knew were priorities for us, this project is still going to accomplish. And I think we can still, everybody going forward can feel this is an absolute win for our congregation. So. I can keep talking if y'all need me to keep talking, but fill in some space. But if y'all have more questions, we still have some time. So. And if you can't think of something now, something that comes up later, our team is here today. They'll be here during our worship service. We'll take a little bit of time during the worship service to give a very brief version of what you heard today. And then right after the service, we'll be available, not just Alicia and Jesse and David, but Ray and myself and the elders as well, if you have any more questions that you want to share with us too.
Let me just go back to the one slide where we had to really work through what we were going to do after the numbers came in so much higher, how we were going to work through cuts and that sort of thing. Kerry, can you go back to the overall site plan? So if you compare that to what we had originally, which is on the back wall, the biggest cut in this was there was a loop road that was going to come in off of Ben Baron Drive and go around that existing shed and tie into our existing parking lot. So that, you know, in this particular area, asphalt paving is just a high dollar. It's a big dollar amount. And then the civil engineer, which is a separate contract, which Alicia mentioned, had to make some assumptions too with respect to piping. And that's another thing if you have to. Because now, when we add new surface area, we have to have sediment control ponds in place to capture that new stormwater runoff. So that piping is now going to be open ditched where we put in our, we're believing that this top right corner across from the existing storage shed that you see there is going to be our sediment control pond area. And that's going to be open swaled for the most part. So we were able to save on the piping there. And you all know, we have several people in-house that are affiliated in the construction business, Brian Ware, Roy Edwards. So while we have had to take this out of our overall scope of putting that road in the back, that's not to say that we can't get Roy Edwards on a TracO or a Motograder and go out there and shape that road and rock it, you know, if we end up having some more funds and then work on that piece along and along. So, you know, and Alicia will tell you, one of our, you know, scenarios when the cost came in was to cut out the entire wing over here, the fellowship hall wing. You know, you cut that out and then you stay within your project budget. And we knew that was not going to fit the scope of what the church wanted or needed. So I'm proud to have worked with this group to figure out how we can still accomplish the goals that we laid out to start with and, and get there. So any other questions after I laid that out? Yeah. Budgeted to have the pond fenced for liability's sake. I'll have to check on that. But yeah, it probably needs to be, has to be. Yeah.
Has there anything been done about, after all is said and done, everything's built and everything, about what it's going to take to maintain the new facility? Are you going to have to hire somebody or, I mean, what's going to be done after?
Hold on there, here we go. So our current custodial partner, Purple Glove, that's been working with us now for, it's been, it's been almost a year? Yeah, almost a year. They, they base their fees for us on square footage as any custodial team would do. And so that might change as far as what we pay for them, week in, week out. But their pricing is still very, very affordable. I can't imagine that it would be that much more of a cost for as far as the cleaning of it goes. To this point, we've done most of the maintenance of our church through volunteers. Obviously, we outsource when it's a repair that's beyond what people within our church can fix or do. But yeah, I mean, there will definitely be additional costs with that. I feel pretty confident that our general fund budgeting process will be able to accommodate that because of the amount of square footage we're adding. If we were adding a facility like that, future education, future gym, that might, you know, that's that next phase we look at, then that might definitely be a more significant cost at that point. I don't know if our elders want to add anything to that? Okay.
I was just wondering, do the funds that we're collecting and stuff, are we considering the cost of this new space, putting new items into it as far as decor and, you know, the grounds, the shrubbery and just making it look attractive? Is all that being included in this?
So that's one thing that I look at from the very start. So I classify that. So the parts that go into the building, that's called FFNA, your fixtures, your furnishes and your equipment. And so the elders will put together a budget on those things. And those budgets, I see them range all over the place. You know, you can go to Walmart and you can buy some self-assembled furniture or you can get them professionally custom tailored toward your project as they deal with like school systems and big institutional design. The other key piece to all church projects is the AVL budget. So the audio, visual and lighting are usually key components. And this one is probably a pretty small piece of it because these are really just connection spaces and classroom spaces, which don't require a whole lot. And then the third piece is the hard construction costs and that's what Clayton will do. And Clayton will have money in there for things like shrubberies and landscaping, foundation plantings and those type of things. But the two that will be outside of that is the AVL and the FFNE. And a couple of minor things, usually things like low voltage for phones and internet. Those would be something that the church would either contract themselves out or most of the time in our church projects, they've got somebody within the congregation that has that skill set.
And the design process for what all these spaces will be used for, those are the questions that the team from Equip asked us, is, you know, what's going to be used, what's the space going to be used for? What sort of resources are you going to need available? And so there, yeah, there are allowances for whether it be audio, visual equipment or types of furniture, things like that, included in the, in the budget. But those may be some areas where, that have to reduce depending on where we're on in our budget at that point and added later.
In the, the budget slide that we put up there, we do have some monies allotted for what we call soft costs, which is exactly what he just spelled out, the AVL, the FFNE. So we do have some monies in that 1.9 number set aside for those costs. Again, you know, they can vary widely. So we do have some monies, depending on the decisions that the church makes. It, you know, there may have to be some additional funds there or there may be enough savings once the, the project is hard bid that we can have a little more money for soft costs if we need it.
I'll just add to that. Alicia's too humble to tell you, but she's an architect today, but her passion is interior design. And that's her wheelhouse. So that's going to be good for her to be in at the end of the project to, as we decide on AVL and those sorts of things, on finishings, that she'll be in to help us with that.
So thank you, Ray. When you, when you mentioned the soft budget, does that include the security upgrades, the camera systems? So is that included in the soft budget or is that included in the hard budget that we've allocated funds for those type of enhancements?
Typically, the way we do that is we have the contractor install conduit for those types of systems. But then the actual installation of the systems would be something that the church would get from a third party. We, we don't have that broken out as, there's just kind of a lump for soft costs. We haven't gotten to the point where we've exactly pinpointed, the church hasn't exactly pinpointed what will, you know, how much each thing they want will, will be. So that's, that's where we're still kind of in the gray area for some of the soft costs that haven't been nailed down yet.
My guess is that's, I'm sorry.
I wanted to clarify his question. Is the concern more on the dollar allocation or on the security aspect?
So I'm just, sorry. So I'm just looking at the, the upgrades of the current system. If that's included in the, in the, in the budget that we've allocated or if it's going to be something that we have to reallocate.
Like more cameras for more places since the, the building's going to be larger?
I don't know the specifics of that.
Yeah.
Do you know exactly how many are going in? I don't think that's been determined.
All right. And my guess is, and Brian can probably speak to this more clearly, but the company that installed our current cameras, we would, we'd have to get them back out here to assess like how much more, how many more cameras we might need and making sure that our video system can accommodate that or if we need to upgrade that. So those are, that's not accounted for in any of this, no.
So she had showed that bubble slide that had the SD, DD and the CDs phases. Yeah, there we go. So that DD, the design development, that's where the specifics of engineering really come into play. They'll size beams and they'll count how many lights actually go in. Up until the early part of the SDs, a lot of that is artistic renderings and it's conceptual in nature. So based off square footage numbers or what we call parametric estimates. And so during the DDs, we'll get specific about what locations have cameras and what locations have telephone outlets. And then in the CDs, it's locked down 100%. That's exactly where it's going to go. So that probably, that question is probably best answered in the CD set phase.
Well, thank you all for being here. We have approached our allotted time at 10:45. And first of all, let me thank Equip and CFR for being with us today. They will be here after the service. So if you think of some more questions, we're going to hang around after the service is over. And then, you know, we can hit them up for some more questions then, and myself and my team. So thank you all for being here. Again, thank you for being part of the campaign and thank you for your interest in this project. Let's keep praying for it. Keep praying for the elders. There's still a lot of decisions to be made. And I'm certain that as we pray for this, God's going to lead us in the right, in the right direction. So thank you all.